And now from McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
And good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's City Commission meeting. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Commissioner Tony Aguirre.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The cross that we bear is an expression that refers to the difficulties and burdens people experience in life. Lord, you have carried us through gray and turbulent times before, and we are asking you once again. This elected body, as others around the world, are asked to make decisions that affect the lives of many. Guide us through these times and grant us wisdom and courage to do your will. In your name we pray. Amen.
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 And before we start the proclamations this week, I had the... I was fortunate to attend the Laredo State of the City address, and they had invited us because they were gonna give us a little recognition. Well, not us. This past year, the city of Laredo had some issues. They had a water boil notice for a week or two weeks. They just couldn't figure it out. So they needed some help, and we were fortunate that we could send a team from our P U B.
Yes, sir.
And so I went there, and I started talking to the people, thinking about, well, what happened? I mean, did our guys do anything at all? They were so happy with our team that they were able to go and figure out what the issues are, help our sister city of Laredo. So I just want to congratulate our P U B, all the men and women, whoever went out there to help the city of Laredo. Thank you all so much.
Okay, we have proclamation, S T C Flag Football. Commissioner Quintanilla.
Come on. There you go.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm proud to give the following proclamation. Whereas South Texas College recognizes the S T C Flag Football Team for winning the National Recreational Flag Football Tournament in Florida on December the 18th, 2024, with an undefeated record of five and oh over other national college universities. And whereas having previously also won the regionals at Texas A and M on November 2024 with an undefeated record as well. Whereas this being their second national championship, with the last one being in Round Rock, Texas, on January 2022. Whereas the student athletes exemplify great sportsmanship and professionalism in representing South Texas College. And whereas four players being selected to the all tournament team and one being named tournament M V P. Now therefore, I, Omar Quintanilla, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of McAllen, by virtue and authority vested in me on behalf of the mayor and city commission, do hereby proclaim January 28th, 2025, an S T C Flag Football Team Day. Congratulations. Would anybody like to say a few words?
I think our trustee should.
The quarterback.
Maybe the M V P.
Good afternoon. My name is Jairdo Reyes. I was one of the All-Americans. I played defense and offense. I got All-American because I think my defensive plays, I got interception, and I got, I think, two T Ds and a lot of positive yards in offense receiving. And our defense balled out. We stopped them. They could have scored like two more times, but our rushers, Roman, he stopped them before halftime. That probably won us the game. And we won the game like that.
My name is Matt Hebert, Vice President for Student Athletes and Enrollment on behalf of Dr. Ricardo Solis, who was on his way back from Laredo, sends his greetings. We thank you to the mayor, the city commissioners, for this honor and support. These guys are great. We're so proud of our students on the field and off the field. They exemplify excellence in our institution and the best of the best and the brightest of the brightest. So we thank them. Go Jags. Nice job. And I'd like to thank our trustees, board of trustees, and we have one of our trustee members, trustee Linda Gonzalez-Antar. I'd like to have her say a few words.
Sure. Just congratulations again. And I think what I'm super amped about and what I'm most proud about is that we continue to fund and support all of our student athletes at the college. It was so exciting. Dr. Solis kept giving us play by play. So they did play against major universities, and it's such an honor that they brought the championship back to McAllen. So we should be super, super proud of them. So.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Congratulations.
Next, we have public hearings.
Mayor, I think we have walking.
Oh, we have one more. Oh, yeah. Walking Southern Roads to Freedom. And who's doing that one?
Commissioner Aguirre.
Is anyone here? Please. I have a proclamation. Actually, it's very appropriate these times that we're going through. Proclamation, whereas the city of McAllen was approached by organizers of the Walking Southern Roads to Freedom for support for their efforts in bringing awareness to the Rio Grande Valley community of the importance of remembering the very valuable history of our region. And whereas the city of McAllen recognizes the national attention brought to our region with regards to this topic and the importance of learning the undertold stories of the Rio Grande Valley of Texas by encouraging our population to embrace this knowledge and commend the strength and fortitude set forth by those who selfishly and at great risk assisted freedom seekers as they successfully traversed our country in search for freedom. And whereas promotion of this symbolic walk of freedom will include several Idaho County designated historic sites while learning a very important aspect of our region's past where grave injustices occurred to people of color as the event culminates at the historic Bethel Garden Park, McAllen's historic location of the African-American lived experience. And whereas the event will take place during Women's History Month and will celebrate formerly enslaved black women who were the monarchs and daughters of mixed-race trailblazing families who assisted self emancipators over the Rio Grande Valley to gain their freedom and once setting foot and to set foot on Mexican soil. Now therefore, I, Antonio Aguirre, Commissioner for the city of McAllen, Texas, by virtue of this authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim January Walking Southern Roads to Freedom Day. Thank you.
Thank you all. My name is Roseanne Batagorda. I am a resident of McAllen, Texas, and I've been doing historical research in the Rio Grande Valley of Texas since I arrived here in 2005. Shortly after, I learned about the stories of mixed-race couples who fled their homelands very far away to resettle down here on the border, on the international border, newly formed international border in the 1850s. So doing this research and bringing this valuable history to the attention of not only our region but national organizations like the Harriet Tubman Educational Center, who reached out to us and claimed they want to come down and walk to freedom. So it's been my honor and pleasure to work with people like Dr. Raymond Howard, who is founding the Valley African-American Cultural Heritage Council, and others in the region who have brought to life this very rich and intriguing and very historically significant history and to be a part of all the different activities that you've taken part in and allowed me to be involved with. So thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. How are we doing? And Happy New Year to you. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity. You know, we all know, I believe, the the history of our developing nation when freed ancestral individuals from the wonderful continent of Africa were announced that they were no longer enslaved. We know that story very well. We also know that we are grateful to one of the champions in American history by the name of Harriet Tubman. We know that story of her journey with hundreds of folks to the northern regions of our country and to Canada for those who were seeking freedom from the horrific experience of slavery in this country. Little do we know, however, about the travail and the journey for many of those who sought freedom to the southern border. So this symbolic walk is to pay tribute to those who were endowed with courage and determination to have the taste of freedom, and they sought that by traveling south to the southern border. We're going to celebrate their achievement, and we're going to honor their courage by experiencing this symbolic walk to freedom. We're gonna cross the bridge and touch the soil of our neighbor country of Mexico and feel the energy of what it might have felt like for many of those who were seeking freedom. This is a wonderful opportunity for us collectively to remember, for us collectively to embrace this part of our history. Looking back is important, but looking back and learning from the past so that it charts our future forward is even more important. Thank you so much for allowing us to join hands as a community. And you're all welcome to join us in this march and this walk, and there'll be more information shared with the community as the days come by. We're so proud and so grateful to have our University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, and our CHAPS program leading the charge and being such a great partner in this community as we join forces to do this great thing. Thank you very much, Mayor, for this time, and thank all of you for giving us the opportunity to talk about this tonight.
We have public hearings.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We have routine items, ten routine items that are on your agenda. They come from the Plan and Zoning Commission with a favorable recommendation. The first item is to rezone the property from A O to R three T located at 2613 North Jackson Road at the rear. Another request to rezone from C three to R three T, a property at 2613 North Jackson Road. The third one is to rezone from R three eight to R three T, a property located at 5300 Tres Laves Boulevard, track one. Rezone from C four to R three T, a property located at 5300 Tres Laves Boulevard, track two. The fifth item is to rezone from A O to R one, a property located at 8017 North Ware Road. And we have a request for a condition use permit for life of the use and adoption of in ordnance for institutional use, property located at 3200 Pecan Boulevard, request of a condition use permit for one year and adoption of in ordnance for a social club. Property is located at 4037 Expressway 83, Suites 100, 105, and 110. That was disapproved, but comes with a favorable recommendation from the Plan and Zoning Commission. Item number eight is a request for a condition use permit for life of the use and adoption of in ordnance for a guest home at 6601 North 34th Street. The ninth one is a request for a condition use permit for one year and adoption of in ordnance for an event center at 7007 North 10th Street. That also was disapproved, but with a favorable recommendation from the Plan and Zoning Commission. And finding number 10 is a request for life of the use of condition use permit and adoption of in ordnance for a guest house at 8109 North Benson Road.
Is there anybody here to speak against any of these items? Anyone to speak against any of these items? No? Disapproved? All in favor? Against? Vouch and carries?
Mayor, I just have to recuse myself on item 185. Otherwise, I approve the rest.
Okay, next item.
The next item is to rezone a property at 512 John Quill Avenue. The request is to rezone from R one to R three. Property is on the west side of Fourth Street at the west end of John Quill Avenue. There was a rezoning for this property to R three C condominiums in 2008. That was disapproved with concerns from the neighborhood with traffic and wanting to maintain the existing zoning pattern for single family. The request to rezone the property to R three is to do a townhouse development. The request does not conform with envision McAllen land use designated for this area to be complete community, which is primarily single-family residential. However, townhomes are similar in character but higher densities on smaller lots. The trend for the area is single-family. You do have apartments to the west that face Sixth Street, and you do have townhomes that are on the west side of Sixth Street. The item was considered at the January 7th, 2025 Plan and Zoning Commission. We did have one person in opposition that was at the meeting with concerns regarding the fact that this is an established single-family neighborhood and would like to maintain that. There's a big difference between single-family homes and townhomes on the smaller lots and that the previous multi-family zoning for this property had been disapproved. The applicant was president with his engineer and indicated they were planning to construct approximately 10 townhomes on the property with access from the alley. There was discussion followed with the board regarding the staff's recommendation for R two instead of the R three. The applicant indicated he would accept the R two. The board did express again concerns with the townhomes and changing of the character, and that motion to recommend R two was disapproved or was disapproved with a two to two vote. Following discussion, the board made a second motion, which to recommend disapproval of the R three, and that was unanimously voted to recommend disapproval of the R three with four members present in voting.
Okay, I believe we have Mr. Esteban Flores to talk regarding this item.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here with my engineer, Rene Barrera.
Yeah, if we can just get your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Esteban Flores, and I'm a real estate developer, broker, and builder. My address is 3709 North First Lane West. I live just across the street from this property, and I'm here to discuss the proposed townhouse development and address any concerns. This project offers a unique opportunity to enhance our city while addressing several challenges. First, I want to acknowledge the concern about traffic. Townhomes typically generate less traffic than single-family homes because they are smaller families and with shared access points. Additionally, we're committed to working with the city planners to implement any traffic calming measures such as signage or speed bumps to ensure minimal impact on the neighborhood. Next, this development will positively impact property values. Vacant lots tend to reduce the value of surrounding properties, while modern, well-maintained townhomes will enhance the neighborhood's aesthetic and create a sense of pride. We've seen this firsthand in a similar development that I completed at the Cascades in the city afar where the community's initial concerns were addressed, and the result was a project that everyone was happy with. This project also brings financial benefits to the city. Townhomes will generate significantly more property tax revenue than a vacant lot, allowing the city to reinvest in infrastructure and public services. Conversely, vacant properties can lower surrounding taxable values and strain the city's resources. Affordability is another key consideration. Single-family homes in this area to develop would have to sell for $400,000 to $500,000, which would be out of the reach for many families. And townhomes, the townhomes that we're estimating would be under $300,000, providing a more accessible option for young professionals, first-time homebuyers, and small families. So the development addresses McAllen's housing shortages, and the demands for homes continue to grow, but available vacant lots are very limited, and townhomes fill this gap while providing high-quality affordable housing options. So this project is also very consistent with existing zoning. There's similar R two and R three developments have successfully coexisted with R one neighborhoods across the city, showing that mixed-density housing can integrate seamlessly into single-family areas. So I'd like to also highlight the abundance of nearby parks and green spaces such as Jackson Park and Second Street hiking bike trails and Bill Shoe Park. Like I mentioned, I live right across the street from this property, and I usually take my daughter to go play on those parks on Jackson Avenue and Bill Shoe Park. But we've seen kids playing in this vacant lot where there's sometimes, and also people dumping debris and trash on the vacant lot. So I think having this development would help prevent that. So in closing, this townhouse project is a win for the city and for the neighborhood, and it will address traffic concerns, improve property values, generate revenue, and provide much-needed affordable housing. And based on my experience with similar developments, I'm confident that this project will meet the community's needs and exceed expectations. Thank you, guys, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
If you're trying to do townhomes, I read over here that you guys are asking for R three?
Initially, we were asking for R three, but we're requesting to do an R two, and which would be a lower-density housing.
Yeah, okay. Mayor, Commissioners, I will just remind you, this comes with a recommendation from P N Z for disapproval, and so a supermajority of this commission would be required to approve.
Okay, is there anybody to speak against the item? Yes, sir.
Can you please come up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor, gentlemen. I live two houses from the lot. The proposition, I know, is for more than five or six supposed townhomes, but the lot isn't big enough for this kind of building, and it will add a lot more traffic, considering each tenant will have at least one vehicle. Also, they propose to open up the cul-de-sac, and it will add traffic through from the alley. And there's already at least a dozen other apartments on the other side who will use that part of John Quill to, you know, back and forth to Second Street. It will increase traffic. I don't know any neighbors in all of our neighborhood, and I have spoken to all of them, who would agree to open up the house that they have bought in a cul-de-sac as a quiet neighborhood and propose it to have more, you know, more traffic.
Could we please have your name and address for the record?
Enrique M. Yan, 409 West John Quill, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
And question for planning. So that they're... They propose to push John Quill through, or is that something that's on the city's plan?
The existing turnaround that's there was a temporary turnaround. So when some of the apartment developments facing Sixth Street developed, the issue of extending John Quill was discussed, and it was not required to connect to Sixth Street. So this will be required to be extended, but cul-de-sac with the traffic going back east toward the Fourth Street. It will not connect to Sixth Street.
It will not.
It will not connect to where?
To Sixth Street.
To Sixth Street.
The subdivisions that are to the west of this location, the apartments, they did not provide for dedication on that right of way.
Okay, so John Quill, John Quill will not go through to...
Correct. It will be extended west, but with a cul-de-sac being required. This was a temporary turnaround that was there from the previous developments.
With the cul-de-sac?
It'll be like Cary, one street north.
Yes, be similar to what you see to the north of this location, right?
But how, but how many on this point eight? It's a little less than an acre, point eight seven, one seven? And then you're gonna have a cul-de-sac in there?
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes.
And then you're gonna have five dwellings? How many dwellings?
They're, they indicated 10 dwelling units, 10 townhomes. So it'd be from eight to 10 that could be able to fit there. We haven't seen a subdivision layout, but that's what they indicated at the meeting. A single-family would be three to four lots in that cul-de-sac design, kind of like what you see to the north and south of this location.
Well, what you have in Cary is you have one, two, three.
Right. Correct. It'd be three to four, depending on the layout of the subdivision.
Yeah, it might not be the same scale.
Yeah, but the cul-de-sac looks like it starts earlier.
Yeah, so it might be.
These are already homes.
Maybe four or five as homes.
Correct.
And now with the 45, with the new P U, you know, P U B. Have you looked at it, engineer? How would that layout would be as an R one?
Yeah, Rene Barrera for the record, Barrera Infrastructure Group. We've looked at various options, but I guess the cost of the land and the cost of the infrastructure, it's been determined that this is more feasible, I guess, to go through fourth with it. But yeah, that's a substandard cul-de-sac that's there now. It does not meet the city requirements. Those, that was done years ago. The new cul-de-sac requirements would require a 96-foot turnaround, diameter turnaround. So, you know, we'd have to work with staff on, you know, complying with those items for either townhomes or single-family.
Well, again, with the new P U D.
U D C.
U D C. I get, okay.
We would be below the density requirements for U D C as far as the number of units for this land. The previous schematics, and you'll see, does show John Quill punching out to the alley. I don't know where that came from, but it's always been there, like a proposed punch through the, to create two lots. But we would comply with what staff recommends and so forth and work with them.
Well, right now, you're asking for zoning change.
A zoning change to townhome development.
Without, without a layout?
I have a layout here I'd like to share with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it really needs to go through.
I think we submitted it as well.
You did?
We've not seen the review for the rezoning. We didn't have, we don't have an actual formal subdivision yet. But it's not required for rezoning. No, for rezoning, that's, we comply with the zoning requirements.
Mr. Flores, Mr. Barrera, I think you both collectively address very important points that are selling to our community as our property values increase, the need for more multi- multifamily housing that's more affordable to more people increasingly, I believe there's more of a demand for it. Certainly, I do believe that you're trying to meet that. But in our city, we also put a lot of emphasis and a lot of weight to maintaining the characters of neighborhoods. And while it is true across the alley, you do have an R-three A, but that's facing away from this neighborhood. You know, we put some degree of weight in those neighborhoods that have been there for a while to making sure that they maintain their character. You know, I'm not an engineer, I'm a lawyer by trade and of course, I'm throwing wrenches, right? I see it, you're gonna create a lot of traffic density in there in a neighborhood that's probably been around since the maybe mid-fifties, late sixties. There's a certain degree of maybe an understanding among the neighbors that because of the cul-de-sac, this is how it's been. The introduction of maybe multifamily housing probably would be inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood, you know, and we believe that there's a certain amount of value that you really can't put a dollar in terms of tranquility, passivity, that secureness of this is how their neighborhood is. Certainly, I'm one for multifamily housing, but again, as you all know, it's about location, location, location. And you know, for my part, I, you know, this doesn't fit with the entire scheme in the surrounding neighborhood. If you go north and go south, you can clearly see there, it's all R-one, west, I'm sorry, east of the alley and then on the west side of the alley, it's clearly R-three A and then I think you go further past Sixth Street. What is that?
There is a townhouse that's on the west side.
Right, okay. So that would be consistent in terms of that neighborhood, but I think we're encroaching on an area to, you know, where we're looking at strictly R-one.
I tend to agree with Commissioners Amora. I think we're, we like the idea and we like the bringing in kind of the urban concept and our density to the center of the neighborhood. The whole different commission in two thousand eight, they also disapproved it. That tells you how longstanding kind of this older neighborhood, the character of it's been held in place. When you look at the surrounding zones, I mean, they're pretty well delineated, there's really no blend. Sometimes we see neighborhoods where you see some commercial corners and then you've got some multifamily and you've got some single-family. This one's pretty well-established, you've got your multifamily kind of off Sixth, right, in a row facing the other way and you have a bunch, a lot of cul-de-sac or maybe some streets that push through with pretty well-defined blocked single-family. It does seem a bit out of place, even if it was five, six units over eight or ten. It's hard to see for this lot.
Under the UCD, there is gonna be a lot of change in character in a lot of neighborhoods and I think a lot of it was the purpose because we need to, I think we have a lot of traffic because of what, the way we are, commercial inside, residential and keeping apartments or townhomes away from others. So I know we're gonna be coming, we're gonna be getting a bunch of these and we gotta make sure...
And our boundaries, you know, we're pushing our boundaries, so we've gotta grow within, I get that.
And so, I mean, think about it long and hard because we're gonna be getting a bunch of these and that's what we voted on to adopt, what we adopted, that hopefully one day will assist us with traffic. Whenever somebody tells me there's gonna be more traffic, well, streets are for that purpose. That doesn't bug me. Traffic is traffic and it belongs to every single taxpayer. But just be aware that we're gonna be getting these quite a bit. We're getting, we're getting now, what is it, guesthouses all over the place. Before, we wouldn't. So that's not necessarily a townhome, but it's still another structure within, existing structure. And sometimes that will ultimately help us with transportation. Hopefully, people will start utilizing more our public transit. So think about all those issues.
I think your new code will get you four, will get you four lots as an R-one.
Yeah.
I make a motion to disapprove that item as requested by the applicant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The next item is a rezoning request for a property located at the southwest corner of South Seventeenth and Vespa at six hundred South Seventeenth Street. The request is to rezone from C-three to R-three A. The surrounding zoning for this area is C-three in all directions. The city did receive some complaints from adjacent property owners regard, to received by the Health and Building Departments regarding the sale of food at this location and the use of the second floor for non-permitted boarding house. Fire also inspected the site following discussions with the staff and options that were mentioned to the applicant. They chose to apply for the rezoning from C-three to R-three A. The applicant did indicate that the building previously had commercial in the first floor and rental rooms on the second. However, the first floor now is vacant and the second floor was expressed to still be used for a boarding house. The request does not conform with envision McAllen land use which designates this area as downtown, which is for civic parks and mixed-use type developments. The trend on South Seventeenth Street is for commercial property and this is within the entertainment cultural overlay district. Staff did not receive any calls in opposition to the rezoning request itself, but again, we did receive complaints regarding the use of the property. Item was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission January seventh at twenty-twenty-five. There was no opposition. The applicant was present but chose not to speak at the meeting. Following discussion, the board voted to recommend disapproval of the request with four members present and voting.
Mayor Commissioners, I would just note, this item comes with a recommendation for disapproval from the Planning and Zoning Commission requiring a supermajority vote of the board. I would also note that over the weekend, we had multiple complaints from this location. Code enforcement did respond. This was a property that failed to comply with hotel occupancy tax issues in the past. We have taken an injunction against operations there and despite that injunction, this unit did appear to be in operation over the weekend in disregard for those rules. So this item comes to you with a recommendation for disapproval, but we'll leave it for additional consideration by the board.
Do we need anybody speaking on this item? Do I hear a motion to disapprove?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item three.
I am abstaining from that.
Item three.
Okay, this is a request to rezone property at twenty-one twenty-one Trenton Road from R-one to R-three T. The request is in compliance with the envision McAllen which designates this area for complete communities. The staff did not receive any complaints, I mean, excuse me, received one call in opposition to the request citing concerns with privacy especially in regards to the height of the building. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. There was no opposition present. Following discussion, the board voted four to zero with one abstention to recommend approval of the rezoning request.
Do I have anybody here to speak against the item? Anybody to speak against the item? No? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mayor, before you...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Amora, on this issue, what's the access plan to that property?
The only access they would be able to get is to the extension of North Twenty-first Street South and then they would have to get in from North Twenty-first Street because they have no access to Robin which is already developed to the south and they don't have access to Twenty-third Street because of existing developments. So it'd have to be Twenty-first Street coming down.
Okay, so it'd be Twenty-first Street between Trenton and the property itself?
Right, more or less where you see the portion that's on your map that's shaded in white, that portion of Twenty-first Street is actually built to this point.
Right.
From that point south, those properties are not developed yet. So the dedication would have to occur as part of this development and then from Twenty-first, how to get to this site, that would be part of the development for the subdivision. At this point, we have not yet received a proposed subdivision layout. But it'd have to be Twenty-first is the only access to the site.
Right. And there was...
There's no position...
There was one person that called in opposition, concerns with privacy, the height of the proposed townhouse.
But as a single-family, it can be a two-story house anyway.
They're twenty-five foot, same thing. The two-story can be a single-family.
But wait a minute, what was the recommendation of planning and zoning?
They recommended approval, four to zero with one abstention.
Is this Main and Trenton or...
No, sir.
This is not Main and Trenton.
No, sir, this is Twenty-first, just south of Trenton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. A conditional use permit.
Item, the next item at five thousand has been withdrawn. We received an email from the applicant to withdraw the request.
Okay, any motion to amend the zoning ordinance of City McAllen?
So good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We have consent agenda items A through N, do we need to pull anything out?
Yes, on item two C, Mayor, with regards to the North Main and J Avenue Stormwater project. I'd like to get a bit of a report on that issue.
Mayor, and I just wanted to add that although there are numerous items on the consent agenda, they are of no less importance to the decisions that are made by this board. They are usually items of routine-type matters or co-op-type purchases. And so I just want to mention that these include updates on subdivision reports, we'll get a report on what Commissioners Amora asked for. They include the purchase of two motorcycles for the police department, reimbursement of certain capital expenses related to water improvement projects, you've got a reimbursement resolution on there, consent co-op purchases for additional vehicles for the city's fleet and AEDs through Byboard which this commission approved earlier. And I want to make a note that we have a resolution proclaiming healthier Texas Community Days as part of our kickoff. Rafael, I don't know if you're here, I don't see you, but we've got a great health challenge coming up that Rafael's gonna lead for us. And so there are a lot of important items on here, I don't want the public to think that just because it's on consent and routine, that it is not impactful to the community.
And actually, I'm pretty sure one of the reasons they're under routine, especially procurement, is that I, we have a lot of confidence in our staff. I know they're gonna follow procurement policies, state and local, so generally, we're not gonna have issues, so thank you.
Eduardo, if we could get an update on item C as requested by Commissioners Amora, please.
Let me just add, get a motion to approve items A through D minus C.
Don't move.
Second.
Or A through N. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Senator Manager, Mayor and Commissioner. Main and J, this is a drainage project that we have funded through the drainage fee that the city has done. Just to give you a little background on what this project is, it's been a while since we've updated on this project presentation to commission. It's about four hundred and forty feet of linear stormwater pipe. It starts at Seventeenth and J off the bicentennial ditch. From there, we start with sixty-inch pipe and we head east all the way to Eleventh and J where the pipe size goes from sixty-inch to twenty-four inch. You know, I know we've received several concerns from residents. Staff has been out there putting flyers and addressing that, trying to update the citizens that have emailed or called us to make sure we try to do a weekly or bi-weekly update with them. Some of those concerns, just to give you, first, those have not driven by. The roads, they're about thirty-two feet back-to-back. We're putting in sixty-inch pipe, that's a five-foot pipe. Trench envelope for that is gonna be anywhere from twelve to fifteen feet, so we're taking a good portion of the road there. We've had to work with the postmaster, we've had to work with trash, with brush, these are some of the challenges that go in there. Some of the other challenges that the contractor has and that we've been working with them to shorten some of the length that they're doing is when you pull that backfill out, you have to put that backfill somewhere and then you gotta lay the pipe and then you gotta get that backfill and then you gotta compact in lifts. So it's not like you can just get the dirt and throw it back in. That dirt makes mess, you know, the roadway that you're gonna travel after he, the contractor fills up the trench, makes a mess out there. So, you know, one of the things we've been meeting with him on a weekly basis, making sure cleanliness, equipment, staging areas, we've tried to help accommodate putting those staging areas. Today, I was brought up concern about children playing on heavy equipment. We're gonna make sure that we address that at our weekly meetings, this is the first time I've heard that part and we'll make sure to address that. We are in constant contact with the contractor. It, I will say that it is a challenging area to work because how urbanized it is, how small the streets are and the lack of staging areas that are within that area. And I'll leave it with that and I'll open it up for any questions.
The completion date, at least on the packet indicates March thirty-first of this year, is that still on target or...
So some of the things that we haven't brought, we do have several change orders that we need to bring forward that will have some days. We haven't reconciled rain days. We've left that target on the thirty-first because we want the contractor to continue shooting for the thirty-first. But there will be days that with this month or next month, we will bring, be bringing the two change orders that will have days added to them. At the beginning of the project, the sixty-inch pipe has a conflict with our raw water line and so that's something that had some days attributed to it. We currently have a conflict right now that we're looking to address. We'll bring that, we haven't seen the days that are attributed to it and we'll bring that forward to commission.
I have an additional question on this item, if you're... Okay, on the McAllen South Industrial Park, I know that we have the completion date of June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. How much longer will it take on that project?
So they're completed, what they have is some warranty work that they haven't completed with the irrigation district. They have, we've done pressure tests, they have filled that pressure test. So until they finish that, we don't have a complete project. The developer can already use the land and they can work through the recording process, but we need that to close that out. We haven't done a final reconciliation for that project, there are some days that we think we're old for that.
Okay, great. That's all I got.
Yes, sir.
Well, I do have to comment on the one that Joakim was mentioning there in Quell Road area is that, yeah, maybe today they're, they're working a little more fluently and with a lot more people, but initially, they just didn't have enough people on the job and then they were opening up and they weren't filling the, after they would put the pipe in, it took them too long to fill it and compact it and, and so it just, it was, the neighborhood was enchanted. And so we need to be very conscious when we're doing a rehab like this or a new, I mean, it will be great for the area because you're adding a large drainage need there, but it, we need to be more conscious on if the contractor has the capability of doing it in a, in a reasonable and also clean working condition.
No, we'll definitely, you know, take that recommendation. We've seen their work, if they put a bid in, we can, obviously, we've seen that body of work and we'll make those recommendations.
It's just taking a long time.
Thank you, Ms. Windows.
Yes, sir.
Take a motion to approve item two C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, we just approved the presentation. Okay, item three.
Three A. Consideration approval change order number six for Quinta Mazatlan Magic Tunnel Design Services.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is authorization and contract amendment number six. This is to approve or disapprove the contract amendment for additional architectural services provided by Megamorphosis Inc. for the Quinta Park and Ride. This, this will cover the structural design, the structural design, the architectural design for the tunnel structure at the Quinta Park and Ride facility. The tunnel includes metal arches with supports for vines and vegetative growth, will have some minor lighting with it. The total construction budget that we're designing to is one point two million dollars based on previous schematic designs and pricing. Staff recommends approval of contract amendment number six in the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred dollars, increasing the total design contract value to three million eight hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents and we open it up for any questions.
Questions? Forty-three, five hundred, is that his increase rate?
Yes, sir.
It's approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, three B.
Consideration approval Quinta Mazatlan Palm Room Contract Amendment Number Seven.
So staff here is seeking approval of the additional structural engineering services for design beams penetration in the Quinta Mazatlan Palm Room to accommodate larger pipes necessitated by the elimination of the pump house. The pump house was removed due to sufficient water line pressure confirmed through testing. Removal results in a credit approximately one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, so we'll be receiving a credit at the end of this in the construction side. The amendment covers the construction documents and the administration... The amendment covers the construction documents and administration for structural updates. Staff recommends approval of the contract amendment number seven for $4,600, revising the total contract amount to $3,816,431.60, and we open it up.
I hear motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Mayor, item 4A is providing a budget amendment to cover the costs of acquisition of the AEDs that the commission approved. These were not included in the fiscal year budget. I believe they come in at a cost of roughly $145,000-60,000 if my memory is correct. This is coming from the fund balance for that department. It's very healthy. We would recommend approval of that budget amendment.
Questions?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. 4B.
Mayor, item 4B, providing a budget amendment for sanitation fund for the purchase of land. This relates to the tracts of land we discussed last week. This will allow us to go out and acquire those properties, have it budgeted. We did adopt a reimbursement resolution, and we are currently working with various funding sources to structure acquisition of those tracts, as well as operate, or the improvements to the recycling facility, and we will likely be bringing that back to you again.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Mayor, item...
Motion to approve item five.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Managers report.
Mayor, we have several items for consideration. Advisory board appointments this evening on item A. The first one I bring to the city commission's attention is the Chamber of Commerce recently amended their bylaws to include an additional commissioner member on the chamber board. Their bylaws were amended to reflect that that members, that the preference is that member be the city commissioner who sits in the district. That would be Commissioner Haddad, where the chamber is located, but subject to the commission's ultimate discretion. And so we would like the commission to consider filling that vacant board member position as one item of consideration. There are also various advisory board vacancies on the list that is in front of you. A number of those are on the zoning board of adjustments, the housing authority. We'd like to clean this list up, make sure that the appointment status is clear, and so if we could hold off on those until next meeting, I would appreciate that. But we would like you to consider taking action on the chamber position if the board is inclined.
Motion to appoint Sevi Haddad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Congratulations, you just got more free work.
Yay. Let it go.
In taking that seat and given the, sort of some of the inner workings that they have, I've sat on MEDC Foreign Trade Zone Intermodal for quite a while. Time is a little more limited. Commissioner Aguirre previously expressed some interest to maybe be on that board as well, getting involved on that side. I'd be happy to relinquish my seat if the commission would vote to put Tony Aguirre or replace me on that.
On MEDC?
MEDC Foreign Trade Zone Intermodal.
Sure, that sounds good.
It can be.
It can be?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Good.
Mayor, item...
I'll have one.
Mayor, item 6B is review of quarterly investment report recorder ending June 30, 24. David?
Mayor, Commissioners, before you is the city's investment report as of June 30, 2024, for the city of McAllen. It shows an ending balance book value of $502,872,949, and an ending market value at $501,298,361. The investment income for the period was $6,118,611. The weighted average maturity is .38, and the average, the weighted average yield is 4.83%. The capital improvement funds and the operating funds produced approximately 78% of the investment income. The negotiable securities had the largest interest rate at 5.5%, followed by the local government investment pool at 5.6%. Officials designated as investment officers by the city's investment policy attest that all the investments comply with the Texas Public Funds Investment Act and the city's investment policy. Staff approves the report prepared by Metter Public Funds. If you have any questions, I'm here to try to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have to take...
We should take a motion to accept.
Motion to accept report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Mayor, item 6C is consideration and possible action to accept donation of various parcels of land in Tres Lagos.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Tres Lagos latest subdivisions, Aquolina Phase 3, Cascada Phase 3, Estancia Phase 3, and Belterra Phase 2 have created multiple common areas. There are maps in your packet showing those areas. They're requesting to dedicate them to the city as open space, and the public improvement district that the residents pay into will maintain those areas as part of their open spaces, similar to other areas already located in Tres Lagos, and staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carries. Future agenda items.
Mayor, I'll provide the commission an update real quick on EB5, and we have updated documents in response to several requests for information to USCIS. That information is with the federal government. We're waiting on a response from them. As soon as we have that, we'll get that on an agenda to update you on the status of that program. Boys and Girls Club, I'm working with our Parks Department to bring that to you, hopefully in February as we've planned. I've met with Ann Fortescue, and I'm looking forward to bringing IMES and the Heritage Center to you, and we'll have a holiday parade update for you soon. As I previously mentioned, we're working on revamping what those reports might look like in light of what we saw while we were in California. If there are any other items you would like us to include on this list, I'd be happy to try to accommodate that.
Anybody else? Ethan? Okay, then we'll go next item. Are we ready to pull out item A on the naming of the park?
Motion to remove from table, item 7A.
Is Danny here?
Survey done?
Yeah, are we ready?
All right, Danny, you ready?
Yes, no?
Results are in.
Put me in coach.
Do we have, I don't know if we have the results of the survey yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've got that out. I'm not sure.
The survey still goes until the end of this week, and then we'll compile that and get it back on the first.
There was no...
Yeah, first workshop.
No.
Okay, cancel. Okay, we have motion to remove from table, item 7B.
Motion to remove item 7B.
So, second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Remove top table.
All right, Mayor, with respect to item 7B, this is consideration approval of minute order regarding amending the city of McAllen charter in light of the charter amendment amendment, election that we just had. In working with legal, we do believe that there are issues with the language of the charter amendment as was presented by the applicant for that. Nevertheless, the ministerial act of approving the minute order will not affect the city's ability to challenge that language in the future should we need. And so at this point, after consulting with legal, we believe that you can move forward with that act.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Executive session items.
Mayor, with regards to item 8A and 8B, it's my recommendation that the board authorize the city attorney and the city manager to proceed as described in executive session, and it's also my understanding that Commissioner Quintanilla is abstaining from item 8B1.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Mayor, with regards to item 7C, this requires a record vote and a very specific oral motion that I can read.
We can make it.
I move that the city of McAllen authorize and ratify the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the following parcels of land at 1.45 acres acre tract of land, more